All right, we're going to call the meeting to order. Will the clerk please note those in attendance?
All will be noted.
Thank you. Will you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item 2A, minutes of the regular city council meeting on March 11th, 2025. It entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The minutes are approved. Item 3, adoption of the agenda. We have one addition. We're going to add a 9A, discussion of the parking lot trees at Banning and Fifth. It's a, well, we'll get to that when we get to that. Are there any other additions or corrections to the agenda? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
No move.
Second.
The motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have an agenda. Item 4, consent agenda. I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move.
The motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 5A, donation of the White Bear Lake Lions Club Police Department drone. Chief, whenever you're ready.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for having us here tonight. Tonight, I'm here to talk about adopting a resolution or asking you to adopt a resolution accepting a donation from the White Bear Lake Lions Club. As the council knows, Minnesota statute 465.03 authorized cities to accept donations of real and personal property for the benefits of its citizens. The White Bear Lake Lions Club is about to make our, the second donation this winter to our police department, which we're extremely appreciative of. Earlier this winter, we've been working with Rihanna O'Brien, and they made a significant donation to bolster our DARE program with the police department. They asked if they could do more for us, and we did see a need. As the council knows, we have a pretty robust drone program. We have two outdoor drones headed by Captain Tuma doing a great job with those drones, although we found that there is a bit of a need for an indoor drone. And one might think that it doesn't matter between the two. Outdoor drones are designed for a very specific purpose, and that is to be outside in a lot of space. And anytime you need to get inside a building or next to a building or next to trees or something like that, it doesn't have that functionality because it recognizes that there's a danger or a hindrance to their movement, and it doesn't allow the drone to get close enough to a space, to a wall, let's say. And so, an indoor drone is specifically designed, it's much smaller, and it's specifically designed to go into tight spaces. We've had, in the recent past, we've had a need for an indoor drone. We didn't have one on a pretty serious incident here in White Bear Lake. It turned out fine, although an indoor drone would have ensured that it would have been fine before. We had to send an officer in to make sure it was fine. So, tonight, we wanted to be dramatic, and we wanted to fly a drone in the back door and fly it right up to you, Mr. Mayor.
Do it!
It's on back order. So evidently, evidently, they are very popular, and they're in demand. So, we weren't able to get it here tonight, but I do ask, recommend that the city council adopt the attached or the resolution that's before you, accepting the receipt of this donation from the White Bear Lake Lions Club, and I thank the Lions Club members here tonight.
Thank you, Chief. So, just to be clear, there's no formal presentation of the donation. Maybe we can do that another time, but.
I hope so.
Well, I mean, to me, this is one of those no brainers, but I just, I do want to take the opportunity to thank the Lions Club for their continued generosity, and I would recommend that we accept this donation. So, council, we have a resolution before us. What would we like to do?
Second.
The motion is second. All those, any further discussion on this?
Only Mayor, do you want us to stipulate as a part of this motion that you should receive an in-person demonstration at a future council meeting?
I should come flying in.
A requirement, but it is welcomed, so.
All right.
All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The resolution is passed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Item 5B, statutory change, expanding use of Ramsey County Housing and Redevelopment Authority, request for support. Ms. Crawford.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Ramsey County is here tonight to present their, her request for support for economic development and housing, or excuse me, economic development authority. So, with that, I'm just going to kick it right over to Ramsey County so they can present it better than I can.
Thank you, City Manager. So, I am my Chong Chong, I'm Ramsey County Commissioner for District 6, which is most of the east side of St. Paul, and I'm also our, the Chair of our HRA, our Housing and Redevelopment Authority. I also have here Commissioner Miller, who represents you all here too on the county board, as well as Director Josh Olson of our Community and Economic Development Team. We're here today to speak with you all about our proposal this year at the Capitol and just welcome an opportunity for us to have a conversation about what we're trying to do there. So, the, we'll also provide an overview of our CED or our areas of work, as well as go over our economic competitiveness and inclusion plan. That's what helps drive the overall direction of the department. And then also give you an update on how the HRA levy has been used. This is, we're into our third year here of having the levy, so I came into office about just two years ago and had the honor and privilege to chair and be able to help, you know, steer and help guide the programs in the first year of like rolling it out. And so, with that, we've seen a lot of successes, so just happy to talk with you all more about that. And then also, what this economic development ability would do with this request at the Capitol. So, that's what's looking ahead and what that would mean. Sorry. And then, again, I won't read all of this, but then, you know, the vision, mission, goals are steered by the Ramsey County Board of Commissioners. We provide the broad direction, and then I'll have Commissioner Miller over here to speak more about our, our planned vision, how the county breaks down to.
Bonjour, everyone. Good evening. Thank you, Commissioner Zhang. Like she had mentioned, the Ramsey County Board's current priorities encompass our mission, our vision, and the goals of strengthening individuals, family and community, safety and well-being, promoting economic prosperity and investing in neighborhoods, creating access for, to opportunity for all residents and businesses, and being fiscal responsible. And now that we have a full Board of Commissioners, we'll be revisiting our strategic plan and priorities later this year. Next one. So, these are our current seven strategic priorities that the Board has identified and is helping guide our work. These can also be found on our, on our website and go into more detail, but, you know, residents first, effective, efficient, accessible operations, advancing racial and health equity and shared community power, aligning talent, attraction, retention, and promotion, putting well-being and community at the center of justice and systems transformation, advancing a holistic approach to strengthening individuals and families responding to climate change, and then intergenerational prosperity for racial and economic inclusion. And then, this right here is a visual that really helps understand the breakdown of the county's strategic teams. Currently, it is divided into five focus areas centered around our residents, and they include health and wellness, economic wealth, growth and community investment, safe information and public records, safety adjustment with the strategic team encompassing all four areas. And now, I'll turn it over to Interim Director of Community Economic and Development, Josh Olson. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for this invitation. I'm going to walk you through, you know, I know that we're here to talk about this legislative change, but we've been doing these presentations at several other cities, and along the way, almost every single one of them said, what are you doing with the HRA levy today? And so, I think, wanted to kind of give you a little bit of background on, on what we've been doing with the HRA levy, but specifically, what is our department that leads this work? And I bring that to you because we're new. We're actually the newest department within Ramsey County. I've had predecessors who have been at the county for longer than, than I have, have been with the county for 15 years, who have been working with you alongside of your staff, bringing and supporting affordable housing, redevelopment activities. But we really hadn't been fully formed, and I'll, I'll speak to that, you know, with these subsequent slides. So, our Community Economic Development Department is broken into four areas, and they're, they're right there up on the screen. Housing infrastructure programming is by far our largest area of work, but we also have a growing array of programs within these other areas as well. Specifically, within our redevelopment programming, we do support individuals within my office, support the large-scale real estate projects that the county has going on. Probably the most notable of those is the redevelopment of the TCAP site in Narden Hills. But that last box there in the corner, related to business support and growth, is an area where I think we want to speak to you a little bit more about that tonight, but it is an area that we've been seeing tremendous amount of interest by our community partners, including cities, as well as from our business community directly. What, where can you, county, be involved in supporting us? This next slide is very busy, and I fully recognize that. I promise I won't walk through any of these slides, but I do really want to focus in on the areas in the blue, the key points that I want to call out. Like I said, we're, we're a department that's about five years in the making, and we've had a lot of activities, a lot of responsibilities shift on us. But I think what's core to what a lot of these through points across these entire things that have incurred, and that top line, which are things that have happened, as well as the numbering, a number of funding streams that have come our way or come through our department, is that we've been trying to build a much more responsive and diverse mix of programming across those four lines that you saw on that introductory slide, as well as developing a much more sustainable, locally-driven funding model. That's a key point that kind of leads us a little bit to this next slide, but I would just say that we have, when I started with the county years ago, but when I started within this particular team, we predominantly were a federal entitlement, so we managed federal programs. CDBG, which I noticed was one of those activities and awards that you approved on your consent agenda, has been the lion's share of our, of our department for 20-plus years. That's always an area that is, goes with the ebbs and flows of things in Washington. It also comes with a lot of rules and restrictions. And we'll speak, I'll speak to that a little bit here on these subsequent slides, but the key point is that we didn't get to control a lot. We were told by federal and other agency, federal government, federal agencies, how we would use the funding. And it always, it has been difficult to spend at times, but also hard to align against priorities that the commissioners stated earlier. The one thing I wanted to just mention, Commissioner Zhang mentioned, you know, our economic competitiveness and inclusion plan. This really is at the heart of the work of my department. It becomes really our North Star for our work, but really kind of drives at the intersection of how the county can be impactful, be a really quality partner, an important partner, towards investing in community through workforce programming, redevelopment, place-based investments. Those are the things that are along critical corridors, for example, supporting the expansion of affordable housing and stabilizing affordable housing, as well as supporting businesses. So, the, one of the first recommended actions of that ECI plan, and sorry, I'm using acronyms, and I do apologize if I float them in my, my speech, there is an acronym key at the end of my presentation. We did that on purpose. We're quite full of them because we, we deal with a lot of federal government programs. But our HRA levy, or Housing and Redevelopment Authority levy, was one of the first recommended actions of that ECI plan. It called for the activation of that HRA levy. The county, you know, had had an HRA, longstanding HRA, but had never levied. We were actually the last county in the metro area to do that, and it wasn't without, you know, big actions and big decisions. So, we approved, the county approved the HRA area of operation, that's a very specific term, but really, basically, the area of the county in, in '21 to begin the HRA levy in '22. As I said, Ramsey County was the last county, metropolitan county, to activate their levy. Just this past year, we had about $13.6 million that went into the HRA levy, and again, that funding is guided by the ECI plan that we released in March of '21. So, within the HRA levy, we support a number of different programs, predominantly in the areas of housing and redevelopment. I'm sure that you've been aware of several of these because I think that you've come through for random awards related to kind of large-scale projects, who may have sought funding from Ramsey County through our competitive solicitations. Critical corridors, which I know is a, there was a critical corridor award that went to the city here, related to County Road E and your, and your, your work with Jim Lake and Van Ness Heights, which we're really excited about. But other programs that maybe you don't see as much on a day-to-day basis, and that includes some of our down payment assistance programming that goes directly to residents as they look for new homes for the first time in some cases, first time in, in their family, in our, through our first generation program. You know, as you can see, we, housing takes up the majority of our funding. It's not our only source, HRA, but it is, definitely becomes the lion's share of how we do it. You know, I would be remiss if I didn't say this because I hear it from you, council members here in suburban Ramsey County, but also from council members in St. Paul. What about parity? And we really strive to create that 50-50 split between programming in suburban Ramsey County, as well as in this, in St. Paul. And you can see from, that, this was in '23, actually '24, we were actually closer to 50-50. I think we were within about one-tenth of a percentage. So, I'm speeding through these slides. I apologize, but I want to set the stage a little bit about where we've been going and how we've been doing it. So, just this past, now '23, so one year passed, we, you, there was about $183,000 that came back of the HRA to projects and program recipients within the city of White Bear Lake, represents two first homes and then that critical corridors award. We certainly want to do more with you, and we're excited by that, but this is purely a snapshot, and I mentioned it a little bit earlier, that the HRA is but one of a numerous funding streams that we manage through our department. And so, sometimes we like to look at this ROI, the return on investment across all of our funding streams and where it's been going. And so, this doesn't show a whole lot more that's maybe happening in White Bear Lake, but I want to call out a couple of the other things that are happening, including our support of homeowners who are in need of rehab, and sometimes that's paired with your programming or separate from that. We also have instituted new programs that I do know some representatives within your community have taken advantage of, which is our new Critical Repair Program, which really was a, an evolution from where we started. When we heard, when we had this as a federal program only, this doesn't fit. This doesn't fit my needs. I have issues. I have a leaky roof. I want to stay in my home. How can you help us? And so, one thing we did do as part of a change in the last couple of years is we've reformatted or revamped a little bit of our Critical Repair Programs to support individuals who are in desperate need of staying in their home. This program also has a sub-program that supports individuals within manufactured home communities, which is a much different kind of program, but all the, all the more important too, because in most cases, they don't own the land, so you can't apply a, a mortgage or some kind of restriction on the land if you don't own it. This is just a three-year profile, and very quickly, just to show that, you know, we've had some awards. The, the award that we just saw earlier on your consent agenda doesn't actually show up on this, this one. It should show up now, or it will show up in next year's, 2024, as that award occurred this year. And very quickly, just to give you a snapshot, because I know home, some of our wealth generation programming is an area where we've seen a lot of response and, from White Bear residents. While those, those figures that showed a little bit earlier showed residents taking advantage of those programmings, we actually are seeing a little bit of an uptake. And so, while we haven't closed our books or closed our data books for 2024, we did see four residents, or six residents, I should say, buy new homes or buy homes in White Bear Lake this past year. That represents about 13% of our total spending, so, which is great to see that, based on our kind of calculations, residents in White Bear are taking advantage of this program more than the rest of the county. So, this is, that was the appetizer. Here's the main event. So, I wanted to call out, you know, our ECI plan again was an amount, it was a great amount of work to really look at the intersections and linkages between the areas of affordable housing, redevelopment, workforce development, and small business. And as you can see from just the, some of the statistics that we pulled from that ECI plan, investing in affordable housing won't lift us out of the housing crisis that we currently are seeing. And one where, where we think that we can begin to start to see those improvements, investments that go beyond just affordable housing, but the invest in, in the growth of jobs and the growth in wages as ways to kind of build a much more prosperous Ramsey This is, that small business programming is also an area where we haven't really had the ability to kind of go deep and go far. Right now, some of that programming that we do have is limited to our general levy, and there's a lot of pulls, tugs and pulls on the county's general levy, including supporting people who are in, in certain, in dire needs. So, we've received logical questions on how we, we will use this business programming. And while we haven't built out the array because we're seeking that legislative approval, we certainly want to articulate very clearly that we're going to continue to focus on affordable housing. There is a major crisis in our community. Our ECI plan called out a need of about 15,000 units that we're behind in terms of supporting deeply affordable units. So, that will continue. We're going, we're, we're making substantial strides we have in the last several years using American Rescue Plan dollars, repurposing a lot of federal funding, deeply, you know, using the HRA levy to kind of create affordable housing, but building on that work, where we, we want to start to move in the direction of supporting businesses alongside of that work as well. We do that because we learned a lot during the pandemic, when, as that earlier slide that was very busy called out, we were, my department was thrust into the position of helping to support businesses in need during the pandemic. That's work that we had not necessarily done. It's definitely not work that we necessarily signed up for either, but nevertheless, counties were called to action to do that. And what we learned through that process is that, in particular in Ramsey County, the geography of not Ramsey County, not my organization necessarily, but the, the geography of Ramsey County is that we have a fractured business support system. Certain areas have a lot of resources, certain areas don't. There isn't necessarily a, a follow-through with businesses to ensure that they get the needs from being an entrepreneur all the way up to, you know, well-established seconds, you know, second, first and second-stage businesses, those that are growing. So, we are piloting some work in order to help with that capacity building of many of our community-based organizations who are doing that work on behalf of counties and cities, providing those more technical resources to businesses as they, you know, write that business plan, execute that business plan, and grow, and hire people, but also kind of working through those areas about finding, you know, flexible capital that can meet their needs where they're at. So, where we are at today, and that's a, again, I gave you a long story to get to this, and I apologize, but wanted to kind of set the stage of why we, we would be at this position. So, we are currently up at the Capitol seeking a change to our HRA language. So, we have our own statute that is very restricted, or it is restricted to affordable housing programming and redevelopment. Because of that nexus between those other disciplines, we really believe that this is our opportunity to carve out a little bit of money out of the HRA to help small business programming. Like I said, we, we do some of that programming through our general levy. It's about anywhere between $300,000 to $500,000 a year, but we'd like to kind of move some of that over into, to the HRA levy. So, the one thing I want to call out though is this legislation does not change the impact, does not change or impact the formula for the HRA. The HRA levy is what it is, but that, it kind of seeks to kind of clarify what are the eligible uses, but also gives you city councils within Ramsey County the ability to opt in or opt out of that. So, through a successful legislation, we really believe that that's a core value. We've heard from cities as we sought to do this last year, kind of late in the game, but asking this, you know, again, not changing that, this is not a new tax, this is purely just changing the eligible uses within the HRA, and then, second of all, giving that ability to kind of opt in. And what that means is, for you as a city, you may choose to stick with the existing programming that is housing and redevelopment, or kind of seek that expanded use. And we believe that in many communities, including yours, I think that that's a really good opportunity to kind of bring the full folks, a full host of ROI year in and year out, as you saw from those earlier slides. You know, some communities have a lot of affordable housing happening in their community, and see, so they see that, you know, estimate, investments happening fairly frequently, but I know in some communities, affordable housing projects take a long time, they're complicated, they may not be a fit in every single corner, and so, this is an opportunity to kind of expand that, that funding array. So, I think that is my last slide, yeah. I stand for questions?
I just wanted to add that I would love to see more projects from all throughout Ramsey County, and this just provides us an opportunity to invest in, whether it be businesses and/or housing. One of the things that I wanted to add in our current HRA is that for any of our projects that we approve, we always have city support already too. So, having city support would still apply with this economic development ability request. Can I stand for any questions that you may have?
Very good. Thank you very much for all the information in the background. Very helpful. Council, do we have any questions for the county? All right.
We got to have a question.
Well, it's not a requirement. I don't have any, but Councilmember Walsh, if you have a question, please.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess, I'm just thinking about this opt-in, opt-out thing. I'm just trying to figure out, why would, why would a city opt out? I mean, it's not, it's just an available resource, available fund. What, what, what have you heard that would, I mean, is it just some caution or, because you've said over and over that it's not going to affect the HRA side, so that, that funding's going to be there, and we've got all this new money coming into housing with the sales tax and everything. So, what, what are the concerns of cities that said we want to be able to opt in or opt out? Can you characterize that? I mean.
I mean, I think some of it has been around like just priority, like concern. I mean, I think some of it has been around, like, just priority, like, concerns that we may not be prioritizing housing in this case. And then others are just more where they're like, they have their own economic development authority. How does that work, and if it's needed? So, that's just been things that the cities have been grappling with. I don't know if you want to add?
Yeah, I think I would just add, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Walsh, I think one thing to add is, related to what Commissioner Zhang said about, you know, city priorities and city activities, I think there's been a healthy skepticism about the county's involvement in the past. We sought this legislation five years ago, or a version of this. I don't want to suggest it's the same thing, a version of this. And it was done very poorly. I'll just come out and say it. And I think there's a, that skepticism is, is this another inroad into something else? And I think what we heard through that engagement last year was, we don't want this to be, serve as another place to get to a tax. And I think we've created the, I mean, taken away the ability within the legislation that the county is going to be able to tax through this EDA, so we've removed that issue. I think it really kind of comes down to priorities. Some communities care deeply about, like, expanding the amount and increasing the pace of affordable housing in their programming. And so, for them, it's, we watch more want to focus on those core areas, while there's, I think, we've heard, like, no, we see the intersections. We're not going to have that big project every year. So this is a way that we can kind of see that development happening.
Go ahead.
Mayor, Councilmember Walsh, I would just add to that, that this is an opportunity for a partnership that, you know, services that we, we have one economic development and housing coordinator, right? This is a great opportunity for a partnership on services that we really can't offer at the city level, and that, you know, a different priority set than our chamber has. So I'll let you finish, but I would recommend that you adopt the resolution when you finish with questions.
Another one, Mr. Mayor, just legislative track, what authors in the House and Senate, I think I saw a Senate author, what's a House author, and where does this go? Do you expect this to go standalone and be a bill that can actually pass with this divided legislature? Or is it going to get tucked into a housing bill, or where do you see this?
That is a great question. And at some level, it's kind of a mystery.
Up in the air, yeah.
Crystal ball piece. It appears that we're going to have a hearing on the Senate side next week on the tax side. So it may flow through the tax bill.
Tax committee.
And/or the local government bill. And that's where our local state government bill that went last year, that's where we thought. So I think it's going to wind up most likely, because it's such a small bill, tucked into kind of an omnibus bill related into those areas.
Thank you. Councilmember Edgbert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, like Councilmember Walsh, I agree that it's an option that we have, and I don't see any reason why we wouldn't want to take advantage of it. I've seen the county invest in our community in the County Road E Project. Our staff were involved with two other communities, part of the ward that I represent. So the County E Project, we've had a couple of brownfield grants that have come from Ramsey County as a form of business or housing development assistance. Our Rambler Revolution several years ago was funded in part with CBD, CBDG funds via the county. So our relationships there have been productive uses that have served our community. So, I don't know exactly what these new programs are that will be rolled out, but the past record in my mind has been positive. So, when we're ready to, for a resolution, I'm prepared to move, but whomever else.
While we have the county up here, are there any other questions specific to our county representatives? Seeing none? All right.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, I'll just leave this with you. This is just a couple copies of our annual report from last year, as well as our resource guide, so you can get a better collection of, like, all the programming that is coming through our community economic development department. So I'll just leave it with your clerk.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, we have a resolution before us. I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll so move.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolution is passed. Thank you again for coming. All right, item six, public hearing, nothing scheduled. Item seven, unfinished business, we have nothing scheduled. Item eight A, under new business, the White Bear Lake Area High School Neighborhood Parking, Mr. Copy.
Mayor, members of the councils, tonight is an update to our last item on February 11th, where we reviewed some proposed parking restriction changes based on the functionality of the north campus, looking at engineering and police review of the area, how the different events in school parking were functioning. Based on that, staff sent out over 400 requests to the surrounding properties directed by council. We gave those folks about three to four weeks to send any requests. We had a lot of back-and-forth with residents. Of that, we had, we received 40 comments back, telephone calls and emails, had a little bit of back-and-forth with people, mostly just how the permit parking would work in the area. So, that was kind of the majority. There was a few kind of one-off comments, not necessarily bad, but things that we'll watch, not necessarily that we could react to at this time. We had one change that we would recommend as I get through my presentation, just for consistency through the neighborhood with the permit parking. And then, we did hear again, as we discussed a little bit at the February 11th meeting, some concern for safety on Bald Eagle Avenue and the intersection of Knight Street with pedestrian crossing and vehicles going through that intersection. So based on, and then the other thing I'll touch on is 12th Street was still, we were still working on the final design for 12th Street at the time, that we had spoke about the parking around the campus, and I'll go through that. So, of the actual parking restrictions that we had proposed, very well received. So, based on that, we would no park the south side of Garden Lane, no park Bald Eagle Avenue from Sixth Street to Ninth Street, which is under the city's jurisdiction. We'll also, tonight, one of the recommendations would be to have the county no park Bald Eagle Avenue from Ninth Street to the tracks of the north city limits, which is under their jurisdiction. Would be a formal proposal to the county to do that. As far as 12th Street goes, what we decided, based on the final design, is to just have the, not have any permanent no parking restrictions, but rather have the permit parking restrictions for 12th Street. That was the input and feedback that we did receive from the neighborhood. So that's the actual signed parking restrictions. As far as the permit parking goes, you can see Campbell Circle was the one that we got a few comments on or questions on, why it wasn't included. Initially, it was, you know, looking at how far people might walk and whatnot, and there was three folks or so on Campbell Circle that said, why not us? But, so after looking at it, it made sense to add them in as a no parking or a permit parking area, just to alleviate some of the temptation of people parking on that cul-de-sac. So, that would be the final staff recommendation for the permit parking. I'll note the, again, as mentioned at the February 11th meeting, the permit parking for south campus has been included in city ordinance. So that will need to be modified to, one, add the north campus area, or the White Bear Lake Area High School area, as well as remove the previous south campus no park, or permit parking area. Ms. Crawford has started working with our city attorney on the, on some proposed language, as well as some other modifications to the parking ordinance. So, that we anticipate coming back sometime this summer as a overall package versus piecemealing it together with just the permit parking, so that we do have it in place for, as we, for sure, before we get in the school next year. So, that'd be the idea. Some of the improvements, the, what we can do is, as we do the 12th Street improvements, we'll leave that alone until we get the permit parking in place. The one portion that we would do immediately, if council authorized the staff tonight, would be to no park Sixth Street to Ninth Street, which is under city's jurisdiction. And then, staff would also be recommending that council, director authorize staff to request no parking on Bald Eagle Avenue from Ninth Street to the north city limits, to direct that proposal to the county to get that no parked. So, as far as recommendations go, there would be two resolutions before you tonight. The first one is to, a resolution requesting Ramsey County designate no parking, or park restrictions on Bald Eagle Avenue from Ninth Street to the northern city limits, as well as closure of the off-street parking area on the east side of Bald Eagle, immediately north of Ninth Street. Also review a traffic and safety concerns at the intersection of Ninth Street and Bald Eagle Avenue. The second resolution would be to designate, designate parking restrictions on Bald Eagle Avenue from Sixth Street to Ninth Street, designating park restrictions on Garden Lane from Lemire Lane to Bald Eagle Avenue, and moving all current no parking restrictions on 12th Street from Division Avenue to Long Avenue. Again, that would be replaced with the permit parking once that's in place. Finally, staff would ask direction to have council direct staff to prepare the amendments to the ordinance for adoption later this summer. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Copy. First question, so I want to be clear, the permitted parking whole construct is yet to be developed. We'd have to amend the ordinance, and then we'll have a discussion about, is that during certain times of the day, is it during only the school year? All that, all those details still need to be fleshed out.
Mayor, members of the council, that is correct. We would do that with the ordinance provisions.
Okay. Thank you. Council, any questions for Mr. Copy? Councilmember Hughes.
Yeah, so we're asking for the county to review the traffic concerns at Bald Eagle and Ninth. Can we just flat out ask them to put a stop sign in?
Mayor, members of the council, they will, there's a process that's required, a stop sign just for intersection justification, so they have to go through a process to do that, to look at traffic volume, speeds, things like that, to look at whether that's warranted or not under those stop sign requirements. So, there'll be a process that they'll need to go through to do that.
I get that they have to do that, but do we have to do that? Can't we just ask for it, and then they can approve or deny based on what their requirements are?
Mayor, members of the council, that's generally what we're asking for.
I guess I don't want to be squishy. I really, I don't want to wait until somebody gets hit there before we slow it down. Okay, and then we are asking to re.
Number two, they're removing the current no parking restrictions on 12th. We're not going to do that until the other ones are ready to go in, right? Or are we going to have a period of time where there's nothing?
Mayor, members of the council, we did look at that. There might be a few-week period in there we hope to have. So by the time we get in there, do construction, it's going to be later in the summer, hopefully about the time that we bring back the permit parking and the no parking ordinance amendment. So, should align fairly closely. If we need to react, we can always bring back a, kind of an intermediate if we have to, but we anticipate those to align fairly well.
Okay, so we're not anticipating a six-month period where there's nothing?
No, that's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Council, any other questions for Mr. Copy? All right, we have two resolutions before us. The first one, making the recommendation of the county. I would entertain a motion to adopt that first resolution.
So moved?
Second.
The motion is second. Any further discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That resolution is passed. We have a second resolution, designating parking restrictions on Bald Eagle Ave, Sixth to Ninth Street, so on and so forth. I would entertain a motion to adopt that resolution.
So moved?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The resolution is passed. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Copy. All right, item nine, our newly added item for discussion of the parking lot trees at the Banning and Fifth Parking Lot. I'll tee us up for you, Councilmember West, and just for the council, this is a request from Councilmember West. I thought it was a good idea. We should at least have a discussion about whether or not it's worth having a public hearing on this. I've gotten emails and comments. It sounds like Councilmember West does as well. So, that's why we're, that's why we added it to the agenda. Councilmember West.
Yeah, so the city of White Bear Lake used to be designated as a national tree city, and we don't like, we still are.
I believe we still are. I'll just back on to work.
I think we still are. It's hard to tell with all of the dead ash and other tree fall, but yes.
Okay. We would like to maybe be more closely aligned to a national tree city in looks, as well as designation. And I've heard from people in the community personally, there have been letters to the editor, we've gotten also messages from the Environmental Advisory Committee wanting to have us save the trees. So, which we are going to be redoing the parking lots. So, I thought it would be a good idea to actually hear from the community in a public hearing. And I spoke with the city engineer, who said that there is still time to be able to do that, even if we have that during the next city council, for them to still put together the plans that we would ultimately approve or not, right, Mr. Copy? Is that how that works? Okay. So anyway, so I'm recommending a public hearing on the ACE parking lot trees.
And just for clarity for the council, as a matter of procedure, we typically have a resolution, can be in the form of a motion like this, ordering a public hearing and noticing it as such. So, if it is the will of the council, and they think that in order to make an informed decision on this issue, they'd like to hear from the public, I think I want to make that available to the council. So that's what we have before us. So I think the best way to do that, we can have some discussion on this first, otherwise, Councilmember West, if you wanted to make a motion to order a public hearing on this issue at the first April council meeting, that would be appropriate.
I would like to make a motion for a public hearing at the first city council meeting in April, on April 8th.
Very good. Do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Walsh.
Just a question on timing, then. I mean, we are, we, we set the staff off to get bids, and we're in the RFP process, right? So, this isn't going to slow this down. Was I not listening? Sorry. We're just, we're concerned we're not going to, I mean, we can adjust if we do the trees or not to do the trees. We can get the process going. Doesn't slow it down any.
Mr. Copy.
Mayor, members of the council, as far as schedule goes, we, at the March 11th meeting, when we discussed this, and council gave staff direction to move forward with the plans and specifications, we did factor into the schedule a review preliminary plans, and this was really to review the ACE parking lot, kind of some options, or preferred option to how we would add parking with removing the trees. That was the general direction at that meeting. So, we're moving ahead with that. If there were the appetite for council to not remove the trees in the end, generally the parking lot will go back as it is. We did speak to the potential of still removing one of the four trees that's the immediately adjacent to the ACE building, the hardware building. That one is hollowed out. There's some damage to it. So, fairly small area that it's in, so that might still make sense to remove that tree regardless of the other one. So, there's still some adjustments that would be, need to be made, but generally speaking, the lot would go back generally the way it is today. A few modifications that we'll look at, that may add a parking stall or two, improve flow through there a little bit, but definitely we'll continue to move forward with those plans per se, and can adjust if the council gave us a different direction on the April 8th council meeting.
Mr. Copy, I believe the plan-
Mr. Copy, I believe the plans and specs, are they going to come back April 22nd?
Mayor members of the council, so the actual approved plans and specifications would not come back till the second meeting in May, where council had approved plans and then authorized staff to go out for bids. So, we factored in that kind of intermediate check the end of April, just to kind of, hey, here's kind of the preferred, because we kind of, during the mobility study process, we looked at some kind of high level, how can we adjust the parking lot to add additional, or remove the trees and add additional parking? So, now it's down to the plan level, so we want to do that intermediate check in anyway, so I'd, we do have that time.
So, I think I have that straight, but I want to be crystal clear on this. If I'm hearing you correctly, the council has not expressly authorized removing the trees. What we have done is pursuant to recommendations said, go out for an RFP with a design and bid that does remove the trees, and then we will have the opportunity to approve that or not. Do I have that correct?
Mayor members of the council, so between now and at least our proposed schedule, May 27th, May 27th, based on council direction between now and then, so if council has a public hearing on the 8th, but for sure by the, at least our planned preliminary plan check-in for the ACE lot on April 22nd, we'd want council direction to give us time to, you know, it's a tight schedule to go between that and the May 27th, where council would actually approve the plans and authorize us to bid, whether they, whether it's removal of the trees or not.
Mayor, to elaborate on that, you, the city council has not authorized us to go out for bid. We are currently looking at configurations of that parking lot. So, you, the council has not authorized removal of any trees at this point, or any final layout. That's what we would be coming back to you with at the end of May, where that's when you would make that decision.
Okay. So, it sounds like this is all very timely, and we were going to take that up anyways, and this is just an opportunity here from the public, if the council so chooses. Okay. All right. Any further discussion on this? Councilmember Hughes?
Mr. Copy, have we had a horticulture specialist look at the trees, so that we know what's dead, what's not dead? You said one of them's been hollowed out. Have we looked at all three of them and can we say, can we bring that information that same, can we have that information at the same time as part of the discussion?
Mayor members of the council, yes, we have had horticulturists look at it. We'll, like I said, the one next to the building has some damage, a couple of the other ones have some, have had some significant branches that have broken off in storms or just through natural causes, but we can definitely bring that report back.
Councilmember Edberg.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Councilmember West, what would be the scope? Okay, you've proposed a motion to discuss the trees in the parking lot. Legitimate topic, totally fine. I have no issue with that. What I would like to kind of raise to the, to all of our consciousness is that issues of trees in the community popped up in at least six or seven different places in the last, since last summer. So, just to mention some of them. We've got the trees in the ACE parking lot. We have a major ash tree removal process. We have a restructuring of ordinances about trees on boulevards. We have had our environmental commission working on the removal of buckthorn trees. Handel's Lake was the most recent area for that, and they're looking to repeat that in conjunction with our, I don't remember if Lamo or one of, one of the watershed districts. We've had some discussion about replanting and encouraging private action to replant in areas that are not on boulevards. So, the point is, we've had a whole lot of individual topics coming up that you might all fall under the conversation of urban forestry. Now, I'm not suggesting that we all need to take on all of those at one time, but at least in terms of how we invite the comment to public, excuse me, invite the public to comment, do we want to be so narrow as to say, the only input that we're really looking for is three bur oak trees that happen to be really old? Or, is this an opportunity to kill, no, let's not kill. Okay, kill two birds with one stone. Let's have, let's get a bunch of conversation on a variety of tree, of tree-related topics that inform how we think about all of these other stuff, because I seem to recall that the boulevard ordinance is coming up. There's other things. So, anyway, how do we manage multiple aspects of a similar topic? And I don't have a strong recommendation, other than to note, I have a really strong impulse to want to encourage a lot more replanting, planting and replanting of trees in the community to restore our urban tree shed. So, whatever form that takes, however we go about that, there's a whole bunch of things to think, talk about. But if we're going to ask for input, what input do we ask for?
Councilmember West, if I could just comment on the process first, and I'll let you respond to the exact question. The way I understood this was it is it is discreet public hearing to that narrow topic, and just so the public knows what my thinking is, and I've made it very clear what my position is, I think parking trumps the trees, but I also want the council to make an informed decision and participate in whatever public process that they think will help them make an informed decision. So, because I have received eight or 10 emails on this particular topic, which is different from any other tree issue, whether it's emmeralashbore or buckthorn, and because one of my colleagues asked for it and thought it was important, I thought we would air it out. But my understanding going into this is this is narrowly tailored towards these particular trees in the downtown area, which elevates the level of controversy and passion behind it, good, bad, or otherwise, that's just the reality. So, in the interest of being fair and transparent to the public, that's why I was open to giving the council the decision to decide or not whether or not the public hearing would help inform their decision, and I would urge the council to ask themselves that. Would it be, if you're still undecided, would it be of benefit to you to hear from the public? And if so, then it would make sense to have it. If your mind is made up, then, I don't want to go through the exercise just for the sake of having the exercise, it's for the council to make an informed decision. That's my thinking, but I'll let Councilmember West answer your question, what her thinking is.
Well, having just heard about this idea, you know, I think to the mayor's point, the questions and concerns have specifically been about these trees in the ACE parking lot. Not to say that the overall, like, forestry, you know, topic as a whole and wanting to have more trees isn't valuable, because I think that's a valuable conversation. I just, I'm not sure that bringing that into that conversation, like, I'm concerned that it would kind of muddy the specific, the specific piece about those trees.
Please.
Mayor, councilmembers, if I may just add, we have yet to bring you that ordinance for trees and boulevard trees and our EAB program, but there absolutely will be opportunity for public comment during that. I would, I would agree with Councilmember West, and, you know, we don't have that language drafted yet, so perhaps an opportunity for public comment, once that language is available, to get really good feedback dedicated to kind of boulevard trees and our EAB plan, maybe beneficial when we're, when we're at that bridge.
Just one clarifying question for Councilmember West. If this motion request is you want to hear from the public, that's fine, but I do want to understand whether or not, because frankly, my understanding going into this is different from what the reality is. I thought, the presumption was, the trees were coming down, and that was the decision, and was this a mechanism to bring the discussion before the council to make that decision, or in addition to that, to have the public hearing? I ask because those are two different things, whether or not this was going to be brought up before the council, and whether or not we want to solicit comment from the public.
I think that there was an understanding that there would be the ability to have public comment about the parking lot trees, or the parking lots, when I think what was, what was communicated was the whole, like, kind of parking and rehab of the downtown streets, there would be public comment. So, I think people assumed that there would be time to do that, and, so I just, I just want to give the space to do that. And I myself, like, I haven't decided that one way or another, so I really would like to hear from the community.
Fair enough. Any further discussion on this? Councilmember Edberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I'm totally fine with a narrowed scope of conversation. I'll signal to the, my colleagues and to the, to the community that this bigger, there's a bigger issue of the urban forest that is coming. Well, let's make use of some of these other planned opportunities to learn about that and think about what, what do we strive to be? Because I don't think this is the same tree city that we were approved in 1961. The time has taken, it's taken its toll, so we can have those conversations at another time. Specifically regarding the trees in the parking lot, I welcome feedback. I've been reading all the emails, I have others. I'm curious, I'm looking for feedback on why these three trees merit special attention. We cut down 150-year-old trees all the time in this country, for all kinds of reasons. And what is the unique contribution of these particular trees? And I guess I'm looking for feedback on that particular question, what, that particular aspect. I recognize, they were probably here about the time our city was incorporated. That's how old they are. So, there's something meaningful to that. Beyond that, is there anything else that merits our attention? So, that's what I'm listening for.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion on this? Okay, we have a motion before us to order a public hearing at the first council meeting in April to solicit comment from the public as to whether or not to preserve or cut down the trees in the ACE parking lot. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. We will have a public hearing at the next council meeting regarding the trees. Thank you. All right. Item 10, communications from the city manager.
Mayor members of the council, we have a fire, a citizens' fire academy coming up. It starts on April 2nd. There's still space for people to review, or sign up, rather, through our website, so I encourage, if anyone's interested in learning more about our fire department, to go ahead and sign up. This is the first one that we've had in quite some time. I don't have a date, but it's been quite a while, so please, everybody, sign up. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Crawford. All right. We are, I'm going to read something in a minute, which will bring us into closed session, but I haven't given my welcome to the high school student spiel in a few meetings, because we've been distracted with other things. So, what you're about to be asked to leave for is something that's unique, that doesn't typically happen at council meetings. We're about to go into closed session, which is a limited circumstance under which we get to have discussions outside of the public ears and outside of the open meeting law, where we have to have meetings before the public, and it's narrowly tailored typically towards matters of litigation that are before the city. And that's what we're about to enter into. So, you get to experience that, that some of your students that have, fellow students that have been to the council meeting before have not. I just want to say thank you for being here. Twenty-two years ago, I sat where you were sitting for Mr. Malam's class and completed the same assignment. So, I say that to all the students, to let you know that you never know what, what comes of your future. I encourage you, whether it's you run for mayor or city council or volunteer on one of the citizen advisory commissions, to participate in local government, because it's often forgotten in a world where we see what's going on at the federal level or at the state level, it gets all the attention, but at the local level here, that is where the really, really important stuff happens, like who shows up when you call 911 and how quickly they get there, whether clean water comes out of your faucet, whether you got a bunch of potholes all over your road. So, I'm biased, because I'm the mayor, but I think it's pretty darn important. I think it's the best level of government, and I really do encourage you to participate in one way, shape, or form as you, as you get older. Or right now, there are volunteer opportunities for you right now. So, before we go into closed session, I know you guys need some papers signed, so if you want to come up and do that quickly, now would be a good time to do that.